Couple gallon rocks here. Call this meeting to order and start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States, the republic which stands one nation under God, peaceful, liberty, justice for all.
Can I have a motion to approve the present agenda?
Motion. Second.
Now, the gain's up a little higher if we get feedback. I'll say. Can I have a second? We have a second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And it's it's time for a public comment. But before we we make that space open, Sal, can we get an attendee count what we have right now?
Uh, turn here. We have seven.
Okay. All right, um, so there there will be another opportunity for public comment. Uh, but if anyone has any questions or anything they'd like to share, uh, now is a great time.
Yeah. Giles, I don't know if you can shut it auto, uh, other it went back.
And there there's there's no hands, right? We would have seen that?
Yes.
Okay. For comments. Anyone have anything they'd like to, uh, offer up about our beginning of school year here? Muriel?
Um, I don't know if the word has gotten to the board members yet, but we lost Dave Wheeler this week. And, um, he was he was our head custodian at the high school for many years. He worked for us for thirty four years. He was always so good to us. My my dancing recitals here every year. He's always so good to us. It's always so wonderful, the music department.
And also also to show him to run. He bent over backwards to help us.
From what I understand, I've been talking to people, he was so wonderful to everybody. I am going down to the to the service and I do have a card and I will leave it there from the Board of Education. Okay?
I just wanted to bring up a good, just the topic again. Topic, yeah. Uh, there's your goals, you know, last we met, that's a big open ended component and, um, you know, we haven't followed up on it since the meeting. And I'm I'm hoping that we can carve out, uh, meeting with board members very shortly because obviously it's important to make that. So, um, I don't know if it's something that we want to discuss at the moment.
If you could hold off on that because we're going to give you a pretty comprehensive update.
Okay.
And then ask that same question after we have an opportunity if you might, um, superintend.
Okay.
Just hold that thought.
Very good. And 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 we may proceed there to a new business motion, but, um, I suspect we're gonna have, uh, there's gonna be a proposal, I think, right?
There is, but I think, um, what what I'm gonna ask at the end, this is so this is the end before the presentation is that, um, we either carve out time on the fourteenth or especially the in between to go into more depth. This is pretty extensive. Um, so we want to give you an overview. We're gonna give you the document to leave with. Um, but I'm not so sure you're going to get through all of it tonight. So I would suggest that, um, you mentioned the time block. To either set that aside on the fourteenth or if you feel, um, perhaps between the fourteenth and whatever the second meeting in September is, setting aside a special meeting, we could do that. But I think you're gonna be, uh, Dr. Dr. Root has put in, um, some time to try to get us to where we wanted to be by two.
Sure. So if anyone wants to check their calendars between now and the end of superintendent report, we can discuss. You can all hear that. Uh, and anyone else, uh, board comment? I do have one other. I don't know. Is there gonna be another opportunity to? There's a public comment, uh, but if you've got. Just something from last night that I took a screenshot of. I thought the presentation looked pretty well. Um, I thought it was a very successful, uh, meeting. I thought the health department was hugely, um, it was really hugely beneficial to have them attend. You have insight that they did. And, uh, thank you, Dr. Angela, for your your insights as well. Um, just one of the the questions that came up, I thought, was good to, um, to highlight. And I think that, uh, the response was a good one to start with. But I think I, as a board member, would like to, uh, hear more, maybe, uh, you know, coming up next meeting as to what the plan is. But I'm just gonna read the question. What plans are being made at each level to identify and mitigate learning loss during during COVID due to less than stellar learning standards, reduction in curriculum coverage, expectations, and ease of access to cheating, et cetera. And I think obviously, you know, looking into that, um, is gonna be very important. And I'm just anxious to hear what those plans are next week. You wanna touch on that just for a moment, Dr. Superintendent?
No, I think we're that's gonna be more extensive. I want to detail with, uh, Dr. Root and the principals that we give you a more comprehensive and complete response to that.
Great.
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, and we have a, oh, one more thing, of course. Uh, sample size of five in my house. All of the children are very excited about the start of school year. Um, there is, you know, COVID anxiety in the house just from the the way the world has changed over the last couple of years in these short lives. Um, but they are all very excited to be starting the year in person. With, uh, you know, a clear trajectory. This is gonna be like the school, the way school used to be-ish. They're all, they're all very excited. Um, so cheers to that. Um, but let's, uh, let's move on into our, uh, our student rep, both, of course, introduction and then report. So, um, Mia, this is your first meeting. Um, thanks for for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
Why don't you do a quick intro and then, uh, if you've got a report, I'd love to hear it.
Okay, so my name is Mia Porrit. Um, I'm a rising senior at Chatham High School. On behalf of the Chatham student body, I just want to say, um, my peers and I all mourn the loss of Dave Wheeler. Um, and we really appreciate what he did for the school. Um, going into the logistics of things, I just want to address some concerns my fellow students and I have. Um, first of all, mask enforcement. A lot of kids don't have the mask covering their nose. Um, and I see it in the hallway or I see it below their chin. Um, some kids want to do that. Um, I guess it's against the rules now. Um, but I think mask enforcement has to be very prominent. And I know that, um, my peers and I kind of hear the fact that they will face the repercussions and that they'll keep doing a repeated behavior of wearing the mask below their nose, which basically serves no purpose. Um, another thing is we really enjoyed, um, the majority of us really enjoyed eating outside on the picnic tables. And I think we should really bring that back even like after COVID, even when that's over. I think it was really nice, especially since the high schoolers don't have a recess or any time outside. I think we all really liked that. Um, other than that, there has been a lot of, um, just social anxiety going around between my peers and I because we haven't been in a social setting. We haven't seen some of the kids that we usually see for a year and a half. So, um, I think that it would be very helpful if there was a lot of support coming from Biden or the teachers just, you know, I think you guys always do this, but a very welcoming, you know, start to the new school year this year because we're all very anxious and not used to, uh, being with kids' hours. Um, so yeah, other than that, that is pretty much it. Um, just the nose coverings, very big. I mean, I've spoken to some people and I've asked them, you know, like, oh, are you gonna, like, what what do you think about wearing a mask? And they said, oh, I mean, if you have to wear it, I'll just do it below my nose. I mean, it is what it is, but I think we definitely have to get on that for sure to make everyone feel safe.
Um, well, I'm just, yeah, thank you, um, Justin, Brett, and related to Mike. Let's, um, make sure that we, um, discuss that at, at, um, BLT tomorrow. Make sure we're in touch with that. Uh, in terms of picnic tables, just a quick remark. I think I it's in one of my slides from last night, but, um, we did reach out last year. Those picnic tables were, uh, the result of a collaboration, cooperation from the, um, town fairgrounds. Um, they were gracious enough to loan to us and Mr. Simmons was gracious enough to put them on a flatbed and get them here. And our operations and maintenance, uh, under direction of Andy, they brought them back. Um, they, as a society, they complimented us because they got them back as good or better than they sent them to us. We made sure they were reinforced and painted. And we're very appreciative of that. And, you know, I'm always a firm believer that when you borrow something, if you do that, maybe you can borrow it again. But unfortunately, uh, we did reach out to them and based on the events that they had planned uh, in the fall, they're not able to do that. Um, subsequently, we know that we want to have students outside to the best extent possible throughout the whole fall, whether admitting. Uh, I don't, uh, Ben and Mr. Juddy and Mr. Davy are working on the feasibility of printing our printing purchasing as as many of our own picnic tables because we think that we use them well into the future. And I don't know if, I think that's in process. Yeah, so, um, you know, I passed my home devo, uh, a week ago. We was noticed. I saw that they had a bunch. I'm not sure that they're the quality. But we are looking to that. We agree in in all three buildings. That was extremely successful and, uh, and we're hopeful that we will be able to have something in place.
This is a stretch, but we could always get our workshop class to make them.
It's ironically just, I think the middle school, a couple of the ones that are over there are a result of the of the technology department, the professional arts department. So I'm not sure how much we can put in the work, uh, between now and Thursday, but good luck.
Sometimes the picnic tables are cheaper than the wood.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, any other comments for Mia? Okay. Uh, well, Sal, let's move on into your superintendent report.
So the first item of business, um, is very pleasurable. We have, uh, we have a retiree amongst our attendees tonight. Um, I want to just take a moment to, um, on behalf of the board and the administration to thank Steve Ryan, um, our transportation supervisor for the last eleven years. Um, I can't say that I was, um, pleased to hear that he was retiring because since I've been here, um, the transportation department has run extremely smoothly. And, um, I'm not even sure the word no is in Steve's vocabulary. I call over there and can we do this? Well, we'll find a way. And, uh, even, uh, I know COVID was immensely challenging on multiple levels. Everything from driver shortage to driver sickness, uh, to bus runs that we created that were very convoluted. Hey, can Steve, can we pick up CTE students at their house, bring them to AM, uh, CTE and then on the way back, drop them off at their home, but only on Tuesdays and Thursdays and when the sun is shining. And then Steve, you know, by the way, we need another bus to pass it to go down and get the, uh, AM students, bring them back and put the PM students there and and Steve, uh, worked it out. So, um, just a very small uh, example of how how pleasurable it was to work with you and collaborate with you. And, um, we know you've been around the shop a little bit, got your elbows dirty over the last month helping us out when Bill was, um, transitioning back. And I know you're helping Josh, um, get his feet solidly on the ground so that we we have a great, um, transition to our new director. So Steve, on behalf of everyone, um, I can't thank you enough. Um, this little certificate doesn't do it justice, but, um, please know.
Hey, that's it. Uh, you don't need to record on new buses.
No, they're not here. But I gotta say that when Diane Hammond sent me an email asking me to be here tonight, I was very surprised that I'd be honored like this after eleven years, but it's a great, great honor and I appreciate it very much. Um, you all do a wonderful job. And I, the whole community appreciates it. You may not think it at times, but they do. And it's just been a great, great experience. And, you know, I won't be going that far, so I appreciate everything. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rumor has it that you're in our bus driving training program. And that you may see Steve on Snapper runs in the future. So, um, he loves to talk. So thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Okay, if you need a second to transition to my PowerPoint. Mike, this camera likes you. Okay. I think those who are feeling from home can see the portion of the screen that is bet higher. Um, I too, before I start with the presentation, I want to, um, uh, just pay my condolences, uh, on behalf of the, um, the superintendent, the administrators, um, and of course, the board, to Dave Wheeler's family. Um, Dave, as you heard tonight, was a extremely valuable member of our team here at the high school and, um, he was taken way too quickly, way too early. Um, and and we're sad. Uh, very saddened by his loss and and our thoughts and and, um, what, uh, wishes go out to his family. Um, I want to take a second also to, um, to thank again, um, this is gonna be the year of celebration, the year of gratitude. Um, I I think sometimes last year I was remiss in making sure that people who made our success possible were were adequately um, acknowledged and thanked and thanked. And I don't want that to happen again. I'd rather we're, uh, we exceed um, expectations in that category. So I just want to take a moment to, um, single out a couple of gentlemen that are with us today. I want to thank Justin Forrest. Um, Justin, you've been saying this before. When we heard that Mr. Thorson was gonna take a medical leave, I approached Justin and I'm sure there was some reluctance in his mind, um, being a third year, a second year AP at the time, uh, to to step up into, um, the role of high school principal. Um, but he he embraced it. Um, I remember his remarks to the staff. He said, I may make a few mistakes, but, um, please, you know, please be patient with me. Please help me be successful. And, um, you know, he took the reins somewhere in the end of April till till this evening. And, um, Justin, I know it wasn't always smooth. It wasn't always pretty. Um, it wasn't always easy. Um, but uh, on behalf of the the rest of the administrative team that thinks very highly of you and and, um, or to speak for themselves, I am very appreciative of the team player that you were over the last few months and always willing to give it your best effort and your, um, and and helping us, um, kind of transition, um, in John's absence. So thank you so much for that. And then, um, not, you know, I guess it's coincidence that Brett's also here tonight. He's, uh, representing the elementary school. And at the same time that Justin moved up, um, Brett, who had a full time job at MED supporting Kristen and and all the parents here at MED, um, many phone calls we got that's it, that we missed, uh, talking to Brett. Um, but he stepped up here at the high school and I know, and I've heard many comments from the high school staff how appreciative they were that you, um, you know, a lot of their problems hit on and with enthusiasm and, uh, and I greatly appreciate that. You two made the difference, um, in terms of allowing us to finish out the year as strong as we could get in COVID. And, um, I I don't think that went unnoticed by many of the people here. So thank you, gentlemen. I really appreciate that. Um, so, um, on our screen here is a couple of things before, um, in terms of my superintendent's report. Uh, I mentioned, um, uh, last night that we transitioned, uh, kind of a soft transition to our new website. Adam is currently still working on links and, uh, content and, um, trying to work through some of the, uh, some of the navigation, um, challenges that are that are in place. But it is up and running and, uh, we're happy about that. Um, also, um, and I don't know, hopefully this will work. You've heard me mention on a few occasions, we are very close to launching for the first time a new, um, custom app. Uh, it's a, um, phone app that will be available in both the Apple and Android format. And, um, hopefully this is going to work, I think, with audio. This is a little, um,
Introducing the brand new app for Chatham Central School District on Android and iPhone. It's Everything Chatham CSD in your pocket. This is the home screen. Tap the schools icon in the bottom right to select a specific school. Tap the three horizontal lines in the bottom left to see all the menu items. To turn on push notifications, tap settings and select turn on notifications. The events section shows a list of events throughout the school. You can use this button to add an event to your calendar or tap here to share the event with friends and family. The feed is where you'll find updates from administration about what's going on throughout the school. Whether that's celebrating a student's success or reminding you about an upcoming deadline. Search Chatham Central Schools New York in the App Store or Play Store to explore the app for yourself. It's Everything Chatham CSD in your pocket.
So a little public service announcement, a little commercial that the, uh, vendor helped us put together. Um, I I I wanted to give preface that with, we do know that, um, the video contains an image of Jonathan and we didn't feel that that was, um, appropriate. So they're they're gonna replace that that image. I didn't know if that would make people feel uncomfortable. So, um, we, uh, we will, we'll have, we're having that modified. Um, we have other exciting things coming with the app. The, uh, we're working JV and the, um, and, uh, project manager are working on syncing the athletics calendar with Schedule Galaxy. So parents will be able to go to the home screen, go to athletics and find the athletic schedule, uh, at a click, at one click. Um, and eventually, as I've mentioned, we're we're gonna be updating the staff directory. We're having some challenges and finding the time to get that up to date. Uh, which will make it easier for, um, parents to define contact information for, um, for faculty. And then the last part of this, as you've, um, seen me mention in our, in our written communications, is that this product has a companion product which we'll be implementing, um, sometime in September. That's gonna allow teachers to communicate directly with parents through Google Classroom and through the app. And so in addition to our, um, the traditional alerts that you're aware that we could do through email, through calls, through SMS, we're now gonna be able to, if a parent uh, or stakeholder has push notifications set on their phone, we're gonna be able to push notifications right to their phone as well. So we're very excited. It this is kind of a little bit in response to, um, feedback that I got from parents over the last year or so that we would love to improve and make our, um, communication with them more seamless, more efficient. Um, and and not have to go to multiple platforms and multiple locations for information on, uh, multiple children. So, um, it's a work in progress, but I, uh, I think we're, we're on our way to, um, making some nice giant strides with that.
Uh, one, one note, um, I don't know if anyone else had the opportunity to, I guess, track down this app that hasn't been launched and installed and tried out. Um, but I I did that. I was looking for some information about athletic sports, uh, scheduling and, uh, I didn't realize the old website was so bad until I tried the app. And, um, the calendar feed in there is probably enough on its own to sell that thing.
That's what we thought. So the calendar feed, um, you know, lunch menus, um, uh, there's so many things that we can, um, move to. You can, you can subscribe to the different buildings or not. So if you only have a child at that MED, you can just look for MED information. Um, and we will work with parents to help them make that, um, a very, uh, um, positive experience. The the other thing from the backend, um, is that prior to this, um, really Adam, I think Giles had access to WordPress. You need to have a little bit of expertise. Now I can go, like, this evening, we realized that the, uh, the Zoom link was not properly, um, presented in the website. Ten minutes before six, I logged on to the backend and, uh, fixed the hyperlink. I was never able to do that in the past, nor would you be able to do it so seamlessly. But more than that is, um, because it's an integrated platform, I didn't expect to go too far into this tonight. Uh, it allows us and it has something called APIs or interfaces with our other platforms. So when Adam goes to do a news story, he would, we would typically have to, uh, place it in Facebook, send it out on Twitter, um, place it on the website. Ju- he can click and select that same information and do it all from one location. So if I want to send a message, I can decide that I want to send it out, uh, to Facebook, to a tweet, to a phone call, to an SMS and a push notification, all in one convenient place. So again, it's gonna have, it has some ease of use for us on the backend, but, um, the bigger thing for the buck is that I think we're gonna be able to communicate much more effectively with our stakeholders. Um, next up.
Sal, who was it that built the app?
Uh, the app is, um, by a company called Actegy, A-P-T-E-G-Y, they're out of Phoenix, Arizona. Um, they, um, they've made some great strides in schools across the country. Uh, we're one of, I think, three, um, in the greater capital regions uh, who's now using it. We are the first. I don't want it to stay clung to that. We may be one of the first that that has deployed the mobile app. Don't quote me on that, but we're early in that. And we're also early on the, um, the second version of their website. Um, and we are gonna be one of the first districts, if we're the first few districts in the state, it's gonna integrate to the other product called Rooms. If you're a parent and you've used Remind or, um, Class Dojo or any of those apps where you're communicating with the parent. This, that's what this is going to replace with it's integrated right to the future's Google Classroom. Don't want to make it seem that simple. We've got some work ahead of us with training and integration, but I think when all is said and done, we'll have a much better, um, product on it.
Did BOSEs adopt that in their platform or not?
So when you say that, um, we we are, we're able to go through another BOSEs with a cross contract to get this product, but this is not coming through our local BOSEs. Did that, did that answer your question? Does that?
Yeah.
But I am appreciative that they did not. In some ways, it's a, I won't say it's a competitive product, but anytime that there's a product available and another BOSEs, it is subject to the district superintendent of that BOSEs to allow us to cross contract with another BOSEs. So I'm just appreciative that, um, my BOSEs said, no problem. So, yeah. And then, and that means that, of course, anytime there's BOSEs, that there's data available on the products. We generally don't do many things that are not available anymore. Um, one of the things on the agenda tonight, um, I mentioned briefly at the, um, town hall last night. Um, but I was careful because it is my recommendation to the board. The board will have to take action on this evening. There is a resolution, a couple of resolutions related to this change. Um, I wanted to just kind of do a quick overview. I'm kind of excited about this. I think, um, it's gonna allow us to be very innovative in our approach, um, to many different challenges that that we have, some of which have come through COVID. In short, um, we, uh, I'm recommending that we, um, appoint both John Thorson and Mike Burns as co-principals of each of the two buildings. So they would both be, and there's some reasoning behind that from the state level uh, and an accountability level, but John Thorson and Mike Burns would be the co-principals of the middle school and they would be co-principals of the high school. So from administrative structure, it would almost look like they're principals of our six through twelve program. Uh, with that said, that's going to allow us to, and you're gonna see the next slide where we begun to work through that. We have another meeting tomorrow afternoon. Um, they're gonna have specific responsibilities, uh, and areas of focus. Um, in short, um, Mike Burns will be working very closely with Dr. Root on everything academic instruction. Um, if there's one thing that you're gonna hear that I've heard from you and what you're gonna hear in our goal discussion tonight is that we need to pay really close attention and intentional, um, actions to improve our instructional and our academic program. With that said, I could think of no better way than putting, um, people specifically in charge of that initiative. And so, um, Mike will be working closely with the teacher leaders, with the teachers, with the compass teams, with the, um, think tank teams and with Dr. Root on that, on those initiatives. Uh, Mr. Thorson will take the balance of that, um, student discipline, uh, operations, um, building, um, building increased engagement with students, parents and the community. Um, and again, we have some other things that we we need to kind of figure out, but that's kind of the gist of things. Um, I did want to mention that our very valued assistant principals will be staying in their respective buildings to provide consistency and continuity of our program. So the day to day operations, while they will be there and available to make sure that our buildings are running smoothly, that parents um, have what they need in terms of, um, any resources and or information. And then. And then, um, when needed, if it ends up being like a student discipline issue, then one of them might consult with Mr. Thorson. If it's an instructional concern or, um, innovative idea, then he might work with, uh, with Mr. Burns. So let me go to the next slide to kind of, um, explains that a little bit. Let me expand this graphic. And this could be a little difficult to, uh, to read, but if it might look a little familiar to you. Uh, we have a very similar chart that we use each year in terms of our communication metrics. If a parent has a question or a concern.
Were you able to zoom?
Um, I probably can't, sure. Look.
Anything?
Uh, view, right? Anything?
That's big for everyone in the meeting, but not for us.
Yeah. Let me think about that.
See if you can, you can.
I will make sure that the board, um, when I leave your time, has a PDF of this so you can see this. But it, it, it really, it's just a kind of a rough, so if you look along the side, because you can't see it from that far away. But basically, we have, um, classroom instruction, curriculum, um, supplies, discipline, DASA, scheduling, athletics, attendance, policy, facilities, food service, health, medical, um, mental, medical issues, special education, transportation technology and wellness. And then across that is, um, really, if you see yellow, that's something that is going to be a focus of Mr. Thorson. And if you see kind of the red, that's going to be the focus of Mr. Burns. Um, this is the beginnings of a communication that will go out to parents so that when an, an issue arises, they'll know, uh, who to contact. We have a somewhat similar, but yet, um, more comprehensive document that's going to be shared with staff so that they're not confused as to who to go to internally. So, uh, we have another meeting tomorrow with the entire team to kind of finalize the plan for the start of school next week. But that's conceptually, um, kind of what we're, we're looking for board approval to, to accomplish. Um, uh, I'm going to pause there because, um, the next I was just going to go over just a couple of the slides from the opening. But if anyone has any questions about this aspect of, of the co-principals, I just wanted to, um, address them at this time.
Just wondering if, uh, this information will be on that app as well?
Uh, yes, uh, we can do that. Um, one of the nice things about that app that I think is different than what we have in the past. Um, if you were to have the benefit of going to the homepage, there's a documents, um, tab. And over the document tabs, there's almost like a regular folder structure. Uh, we can have folders there where a lot of the forms that we use for the district can be placed there. Um, we can, I think there's a board of education folder there, but one of the things we can do is this, this has come up in the past. Is if we can get in a habit of making sure that anything that's shared at the board meeting or with the community is available, uh, through that, that folder as well.
It just seems as a past president that most of the questions were as simple as directing them to the right places. So if this was on that app and that app was working so well, I think that would have.
Great suggestion.
Would be very helpful in the future. I'm just wondering, in terms of, you know, dissemination to the, to parents, um, what's the plan to get out the, you know, the word?
Yeah, so after tomorrow, when we've kind of finalized this, um, Adam will be working on, uh, on a release to, to evolve to the community and to our parents. And, um, by the end of the week, we will have something out that kind of explains what we're, I didn't want to get too far ahead of ourselves. Because theoretically, this is a recommendation to the board, but once the board, um, I'm assuming, uh, if you approve it, then we have kind of marching orders to get this out. And within the next couple of days, we'll communicate that with the parents.
Just wondering if, if any teachers have had any, um, uh, comment on, on the proposal?
Yes, um, we've had, um, I've worked with the union, um, Jill and Ashley for feedback. And, and Lisa's also had conversations with the teacher leaders. And we, this isn't where we originally began. We took some of the feedback, um, that we got from them and kind of modified, um, the plan slightly. And, uh, again, we'll continue the conversation tomorrow. But we, we did to some extent have input from our teaching and teacher leaders. I should say, um, union leadership and teacher leader group input into this.
Question number three. Uh, there was discussion last meeting about this connecting with the elementary school as well. Um, that's been.
Yep.
And then, uh, to this extent, so just.
Yeah, in fact, um, I think, um, and again, I'm, I can't even see it on my own screen, but you're going to, I think you're going to see down here somewhere. Uh, in a few of those boxes where we also reference, uh, K five and, and this Reno. And so, um, those, those opportunities even exist in this diagram. But just to refresh, and I think that might have been something I mentioned to the board, uh, in my, my communications and, and not to the public. But the, the ultimate goal, although this program, this, um, concept focuses on continuity between six, twelve of these two individuals. What has not fallen, um, aside is the fact that we need better continuity pre-K twelve. And that this, the, the one thing I can, um, attest to is that this leadership group is tightened in. And we don't, we, we do very little in, in isolation of each other. Um, everything is interrelated, uh, from the compass teams to the think tank groups, to our, to our administration. We see, we're beginning to see more things as a continuum than isolated by a building. And so the thought with this is, uh, we didn't want to have co-co-co principal, although you could argue that if they had three principals in each building, then they were interchangeable. We thought that was a little too confusing. We do recognize that there are many opportunities for when, um, the elementary program, Mr. Reno, on Mr. Fortran need to be involved in conversations, because all of these, uh, opportunities for students and skills scaffold on one another. And it needs to be good, um, what we call, um, not only vertical, but horizontal articulation within our program. So, um, those opportunities were hopeful, will also be part of this.
Uh, one more question. Is, is the plan to, if this does pass and this is implemented, is this going to be, is there going to be some sort of test period or trial period to see how this plays out?
Absolutely. I think, um, the best way I would answer that is, you know, we just don't put it in place and kind of step back and, and see what happens, right? Um, we'll periodically evaluate, um, how effective it is, uh, in terms of, does it improve communication amongst our staff? Is it, um, is it yielding the kinds of, um, attention that we wanted to give our instructional program? And, uh, again, I don't think I would be too quick, uh, with any initiative. You want to give it some time to, to kind of come to its full maturity and, and work through the bugs. But I think we should, um, at a minimum, um, reevaluate whether we would continue into a second year or not. Uh, but I think that would be a good demarcation, uh, to periodically give the board updates, uh, in terms of how we're making out and share perhaps hopefully, um, uh, lessons learned and positive outcomes. But at some point, um, we, we would need to, um, determine whether this was as effective as we had hoped it would be and whether we would continue it into the future. So I would say we, we should check in quarterly and then, um, we, next spring, April or May, we should decide whether this is something that has, um, resulted in, in a positive outcome.
Well, I'm sure it's up there, but will, um, Mr. Thorson and Mr. Burns have home bases and with each, in each building or are we not back there yet?
Yeah, so I mean, we've tossed around some of those ideas. Um, I, I want to be less rigid initially to kind of put ourselves in any one box. Um, and, you know, in one of our discussions, um, we said, well, um, what, what if they have a schedule? Like, you know, um, you know, Mike was in the high school Monday, Wednesday and Friday. And, and then we started thinking, really, why put, why paint ourselves in a corner? Um, the, the whole idea of this is that we're leveraging what we believe to be individual administrative strengths. So if it turns out that, you know, Mike is working with, um, some teacher leaders at the high school on Monday afternoon on, um, some science curriculum. And John happens to be in the building working with a student discipline issue with, with Justin. There's nothing wrong in that. And that's kind of why we, we feel that the APs are a very integral, integral part of this plan. They're going to be the anchors within the building so that teachers don't have to feel like there's nobody there administratively to turn to if there's a problem. So I, I, I want to answer that with, I'm less concerned that we have a, a schedule in place and more concerned that, um, they're addressing their, their areas of focus and giving them adequate attention. I'll be fine. But the middle school says, we never see Mr. Burns anymore or, you know, vice versa, we, we will have to address that. But I think a new program, communication is going to be, is going to be key to success. And, uh, and certainly, um, feedback and, um, and voice, both teachers, student, um, and community, parents, so.
Thank you.
Just wondering if we know of another school district in the state or country that has done this?
So if you had asked that question, um, and I did a little bit of, this is time for the research. As it turns out, um, I didn't find one, um, regionally that has done the co-principal in more than one building. But we did talk to one of our leadership consultants who has, is actually personally been part of our co-principal model. Um, there, there are advantages and disadvantages. Um, you know, she has shared some, some particular challenges with that particular incident, uh, with incidents of it, um, and will certainly take that into consideration. I think what's different here is, um, from the little research, and it wasn't extensive that I did. Everyone has a different justification for why they did it. Sometimes it was that a beloved principal of twenty, thirty years was about to retire and they didn't want that person leaving with all the institutional knowledge, um, of those years. They put, you know, somebody, uh, co-principal in place to kind of help with the transition. Um, there, there were, there was at least one example where it was done to actually, um, potentially force someone out. Those aren't the, those aren't the justifications here. We are truly rooted in, um, the objective to improve our programming. And, uh, we, again, I'm being a little repetitive, but we really felt that when, um, a principal was torn between too many different initiatives, they, they're not focusing on what's really important to us. And we focus and measure on things that are important to us. So now, um, uh, Mr. Burns has some big issues to fill, because we have high expectations that we're going to, um, really pay some attention to our instructional program along with, uh, Dr. Rude. The biggest comment that we heard is, is sometimes around personalities, right? And I think, um, what I'm confident about is that we have a strong administrative team that cares deeply for each other and, um, and has a good working relationship. So others had, um, suggested that maybe somebody is trying to take charge over someone else. Um, I'm hopeful that that's not the case here. Okay, anything else for this, um, initiative? Okay, so, um, I don't want to, uh, you know, I'm not going to go through a whole, uh, litany of slides from last night, but I thought I'd touch upon a few. Um, just to kind of recap, so again, uh, as I mentioned last night, everything related to COVID, including a link. Uh, the, the last night's, um, webinar was posted this morning, so it is up there for anyone who could not view it. It's on our YouTube channel and the link to it is also on our homepage or on, on our website. I don't know specifically if Adam has a chance to put that homepage up, but we also have in the upper right-hand corner, um, we have the ability. Um, again, another advantage of this website, we can add quick links to the top. We can put them on there. When COVID goes away, we can take it off and put something else there. But in the upper right-hand corner, there's a link to, uh, everything to do with COVID. And that's kind of our repository of all the documents that we speak about, all the plans that we have, all the diagrams that we have. So just as a reminder, uh, to parents, board members, the community, that's a good place to go for something that we're doing related to COVID. Um, oh, just mentioning that. So, uh, there's the YouTube link. It's available. Um, yeah, and places that I mentioned. It's worth mentioning that everything that we've done this, um, summer to get ready for the opening was based in, like I mentioned last night, in either the Back to School Guide for the State Education Department, CDC Recommendations, American Academy of Pediatrics, or most recently, uh, with some of the new information coming out of the governor's office. Um, she spoke today. I've looked at the, um, kind of the hot bullet that highlights, um, some things are promised, but nothing was, nothing was, um, no new information today in terms of mandates or, or requirements. She is looking to look into required vaccinations and some other topics, but that is not anything that was designed. We talked a little bit about, uh, health and safety, just really quick. Um, we are no longer doing the daily health screenings or temperature checks. You heard, um, uh, Jack Matt, um, support the decision on that. And again, uh, kudos to our operations and maintenance who kept our buildings clean and disinfected last year. We are not backing off on any of that. We think that has tremendous benefit, the benefit, um, to our students and to our staff, regardless of whether there was COVID or not. I don't know how many people, if people have got colds last year. I didn't get a single one. It can't hurt that we're cleaning surfaces and killing germs and viruses, um, more than just COVID. So our clean regimen is going to stay in place. Uh, most of you know from, and I neglected to mention this last night, um, the presentation took me a lot longer to read than I had expected. But remember that all, all meals this year continue to be free for all students. Um, we're excited, very excited about that. And, um, again, you've heard that to the best extent possible, our students are going to be eating in cafeterias where possible, be socially distanced. Uh, our concern there is that, um, the attorney from the governor's office said that in-person learning is the priority for this year and that wherever there's distance recommendations, um, they should not be a constraint to not bringing students back. There were some schools, it's a pretense, they said, if I can't bring everybody back and have to eat in the cafeteria, I'm not bringing everybody back. Well, the clear directive is the focus is on bringing everybody back. If everybody is, um, you know, five and a half foot apart in the cafeteria rather than six, the downside is if there is a positive case, there may be a greater number of students who are quarantined and we want to, we want to minimize that. But, um, we, uh, in terms of, uh, child nutrition, every, every student eats for free and do so mostly in cafeterias. Transportation, I mentioned, um, full capacity, two to a seat, uh, fully masked, um, windows open on the bus to improve ventilation, cleaning and just, just affecting of all the buses on a nightly basis and similar to what we did last year. That is really one of the key components to us being able to bring everybody back, um, in person for sure. Um, you know, we continue, uh, Dr. Root and, and, and the teacher leaders, the teachers, the administrators. We are all very concerned about the social, emotional wellbeing of our students. Uh, we, you know, as you know, we had summer school where we invited some students back who were either full remote or those students who were transitioning back from homeschool situations to best extent possible. We've tried to get them back in and, and acclimated to the building. Today I was just at the middle school, I'm speaking to Jackie Hoffman. She was giving some building tours to some students who come back after a year. We're trying to get them back in, but we don't want to be, um, we want to be cognizant of that. Just, um, as, as we mentioned, um, there's going to be a little anxiety around returning to, to school and re-engaging with their, with their friends. And, um, you know, we are going to be prepared. Our teachers are going to be on the lookout for, um, students who are exhibiting signs of, um, you know, concern and anxiety over that. And, uh, the, the, I don't want to speak in principles, but I know there's different activities that they're hoping to plan to do in the opening, um, days and weeks of school to try to re-engage students, uh, given the, the constraints around, uh, COVID distancing and stuff. Um, just to, to be aware, as we mentioned last night, that the COVID tracker is available. Um, shows most of the counties in New York State are in red, which is high transmission zone. You heard Mr. Matt talk about Columbia County just being under three percent right now, but the number of cases do have been increasing on a fairly regular basis. Um, our opening of school, just kind of a public service announcement, um, announcement, our staff. Uh, try to ship back up today and tomorrow. We've got our new teachers in. They had a wonderful first day with them today. Our administrators met with them. Um, I don't think we have anybody running out of the, uh, out of the program. So, uh, we have a pretty large number of, we said, do you count how many were there today? How many new teachers? Yes, probably.
Rough.
There?
Around twenty.
Yeah, twenty, thirty, twenty or so new folks. Some are new to the profession. Some are veterans, veterans who are joining our district. Uh, it was a great day. The administrators spent time with them and, uh, technology spent time with them. Tomorrow, the business office, um, two days of a lot of information to kind of stuff into their, their little heads. We'll give them time in their classrooms. Um, we're very happy that they're joining the, the Chatham family. Uh, and we're really wishing them, uh, a very successful career here, uh, in Chatham. But our staff, the rest of the staff joins us on Tuesday, uh, as I mentioned before in my, um, weekend report, week. It's not weekend report, it's the weekly report last week. Uh, opening day will be Tuesday morning, uh, doors open at eight, tickets in advance to Ticket Trant, Ticketmaster. Uh, we, the board gets no charge for board members to attend. Uh, my opening address, um, is at eight thirty, roughly an hour, hour and fifteen minutes. Uh, we'll recognize, as we do every, um, most every year. Last year was diff- difficult with the virtual opening. But we will recognize those, um, members of our staff who've been here, members of our, uh, employees who've been here for a number of years, um, just to celebrate, um, with them as well. And then our students come back on Thursday. Um, one of the things that was on a, a later slide last night, um, we are running normal building schedules this year. We're not, um, uh, staggering, um, arrival or departure that, that seriously, um, took a chunk of instructional time away. And that, um, greater, that, that, um, lessened our ability to have contact with students. So the times that were in place, um, and are published, uh, and we've been using over the last few years are back in place. We talked about physical distancing, transportation. I talked about health and safety items. Uh, one thing that we've tried to urge and get the message out to parents, although we're not doing health checks this year, we're not doing temperature checks. Really, um, just very, um, uh, just like we would prior to COVID. We're really urging parents to keep their children home if they're not, if they're not feeling well. Um, and like we did in the past, if a student is sent home with COVID-related symptoms, um, we are also going to continue, uh, in Columbia County with all the schools and, and the Columbia County Department of Health, we will be sending. We will be sending siblings home as well. And then you heard Jack mention last night. That we do have hopes that in the future with the ELC grant, we're going to have capacities in our own buildings, each building in Columbia County. We'll have a molecular rapid PCR test where we can do a differentiated diagnosis. If a student is ill, we can wait and setting home, at least in terms of their parents having to seek a COVID diagnosis. And we think that will help us greatly. And I don't really want to go down too far the path with surveillance testing and other stuff, we can do that in the future. As you guys, Mia mentioned, the governor came out last Friday with. A mask mandate. It took a lot of pressure off the schools, especially those in the capital region who had gone out early with. With meetings, some very contentious discussion. You know, I respect. Everyone's viewpoint on this, but at the end of the day, this is something that is outside of our control. Masks must be worn at all times in in school buildings regardless of vaccination status, and that's what we follow. Just protocols and if people were to say, just a message or a quick visual of the four different ranges, low, moderate. Substantial and high, really not that important tonight. What I mentioned last night, and it didn't come out today, it's gonna be out sometime this week, but we're really hopeful. The public health directors of the counties in the greater capital region collaborated, most did. There were a few who were on their own, but most collaborated in a very comprehensive document. Help us better be consistent with the way we contact tricks. One of the criticisms. Coming out of last year is that there was a lack of consistency between counties and between. Schools in terms of how they handled quarantining to avoid that confusion and to try to simplify the process. Not every. Case is identical, so there needs to be some latitude for interpretation, but for the most part, these graphics will. Illustrate what happens when a student who's vaccinated is not that student who isn't. Whether that occurs in a classroom, on a bus, in the lunchroom. And we think these these diagrams, these flow charts are going to be immensely helpful. Help not only parents, but our our nurses navigate this, you know, confusing area. We still have Channel United at channel dot K one two, that's the email that parents have been reaching out to me over the last few weeks to send me information. And questions specifically for the town hall, but. I've invited parents to continue to communicate with us on COVID-related concerns with that with that email address. So that was another slide. I I there's only one, this is the last slide. I thought it was worth bringing back in. It was. I actually put it last night in the very first, to answer the very first question and one of the first questions. But we, I did have the nurses last week go in and with the data that they have available to them. Give us some indication. I had several parents ask where we are with vaccination status. Many feel that vaccination is the way out of this. COVID pandemic and I just figured I would share with with you where we are. If you run the call last night, this is certainly redundant, but our one one little asterisk here. At MED, this number is representative of what was in place at the end of June, again with new staff joining us over the last few weeks. We do need to update this number, but we were in a healthy, over ninety percent range at MED prior to the start of summer. Middle school, we're at a hundred percent, which is kind of awesome. And at the high school, eighty-six percent. And those numbers are staff, so that's. Teachers, historians, administrators, cafeteria, technology, everyone in the building is represented in that number. And then on the right hand side, you see our students. Couple of quick things. One, you know, the Pfizer vaccine is now fully authorized for sixteen and up, still emergency use for twelve and up. If you run the call, you heard Jack say that he thinks Moderna authorization is right around the corner. And perhaps I I've heard estimates as early as November and as late as the beginning of the school year authorization for. Five through twelve year olds might be available. Again. I listened to the recording from last night and those numbers, we still, there's some room there, right? More students that we get vaccinated in that twelve to. Twelve and up category, better off we're going to be in terms of reducing the number of students who will have to be vaccinated or be quarantined. I think the one of the more common questions last night was if you're if you're vaccinated, you have to be quarantined. The answer is it depends. If you're vaccinated and you're asymptomatic, you do not have to quarantine, but of course with breakthrough infections. But on breakthrough of the virus, if you are vaccinated but symptomatic, then you may have to quarantine. So that's that's the end of that portion. And if that isn't enough, and so let's start there for a second.
Could you, or you and Lisa speak to how many of our students. Are going to be learning from home and what grade levels they are? And are they all mask related?
So I think what you're asking is a different question than what I thought. Let me let me give you what I thought you were going to ask, and then I might have to ask Brett, our homeschool coordinator, to do that. Because we did send you some numbers a few weeks ago, but they've changed a little bit. So what I thought you were going to ask. Is we are only providing in-person instruction this year.
Yeah.
We do not have a fully remote.
I really like this going through Bosse's.
Right. So well, in terms of that, we only have, we we set out that survey.
Yes.
And we asked for parents to identify any students who are medically compromised. We want to seek alternate remote arrangements. Of the list of people who had submitted to us, we spoke to all of them. All but two provided adequate medical documentation. I'm sorry, only two provided adequate medical documentation for us to approve. Fully remote learning for this coming school year. It's two, it's two twelve graders. There are going to be, there were two options through Bosse's. This is the secondary option, grades nine through twelve, which is a. A asynchronous program. They are, it happens to be that both students have Amanda Carroll as their counselor. Amanda's working with the distance learning folks at Questar to build a custom high school virtual schedule for them. To make sure that they have what they need to graduate. They will then go through some asynchronous learning and they will receive their course credit totally online to those two students. All the other students we reconciled and it wasn't sufficient. Medical documentation to allow them to be in the program. And then there was one request and it was actually, you saw them. And we've had several requests actually, but there was one last night, the comments. Asking for consideration when there's a medically compromised person in the household. And unfortunately, we just don't have the capacity to go that deep. What I thought you were, so that's if that's what you were asking, then there's the answer. Brett, I know I'm putting you on the spot. Today, as of today. I saw the the chart earlier this week. I think we had about seventy-five students. At that point who remain in a situation that were identified as homeschooled. Can you?
Yeah, so. This time, I understand this so you guys can hear better. This time of year is kind of hectic because we have our standard homeschool kids who have.
Yeah, let's get a microphone on you. Thanks.
So of the kids that are typically always homeschooled, you know, from eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty. Most of those kids have pretty much rolled over or graduated. So my bulk group of kids that are always homeschool families. It's pretty consistent. Most of the kids, well, I updated you guys, I was just trying to look up the email exactly that I gave the board the update after our last meeting. The majority of kids who were in a private school and went homeschool last year have returned back to their private schools. And we still had a couple other families that were up, our numbers were still up a little bit from what they typically are. After the presentation last night, there was more information. I did have, I was just talking to Dr. D'Angelo and Dr. Root. There were four or five families that did decide to enroll their kids in homeschool this year, just since then. If I had to generalize the population of kids, mostly the newer kids that are coming to homeschool. Are elementary kids and grades one through three is predominantly where the new kids are kindergarten through three. The kindergarten parents have expressed. Their first time in a school district having masks, they're uncertain and they feel they can handle the educational requirements. Some of my first grade families that have enrolled are kids that were homeschooled last year or did remote learning last year and their parents have concerns over the COVID pandemic in general. Because of a lack of that, a lack of vaccinations. Very few of the new homeschool students are, I think I have. One middle school student who I got new today and there is, I believe, one high school student. I do think ultimately, I think that last year our numbers. Lots of stuff go right around a hundred and twenty. I don't think that we will get back to that number again. But I do suspect that we will end up with an elevated number of homeschool kids compared to your typical year. What that exact number is, I probably could give the board a more accurate number, you know. October first, I hunted down most of the families that haven't turned in paperwork and gotten their letters of intent. So I'd be happy to provide the board with a number, but I do think it will be elevated, but I don't think it'll be elevated to the level that it was last year.
Can I, can I just, for for anyone, especially if there's anyone remote who wasn't following all of that. The school district's only way to support full-time learning at home. Is as a, in a regulatory role in supporting home-based education, right? That does not include instruction from from school teachers. And other than that, there's there's private options available, but that's the only way that that chat can support those students or families.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And the only thing I would add that you reminded me that is that. Most of the parents are willing to take this on at the elementary level because they think that they can handle teaching their kids basic reading, writing and math. The majority, regardless of your COVID time or prior to that, any of our students who are ninth grade and up, the majority of them. Besides a couple of families that I can think of, usually use an online program like Acelis or Penn Foster where you type in your age, your state. And they spit out a curriculum and you get a little bit of choice in your elective.
And clearly, that's another type of private support.
Yeah, but that's, like I said, they pay a monthly fee, they vary. But the high school parents, most parents, and I don't want to speak ill of anyone, can't, most can't teach their kids, you know, chemistry. So they do an online component, very similar. And some of them are upgrading those programs to have an interactive face-to-face. Remote learning, but most of them prior to that were, you know, here's your activity online, here's a reading or, and then you just turn it in and get graded.
That's right. So this, my, the simple answer for me is that we had two students, both seniors. That are going to be schooled through Bosse's and they had to. Commit for the entire year. Is that correct?
Yes, but.
Two students in our whole school district.
That's correct.
That's, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Brett. Yeah, I mean, we'll remember this, but getting those homeschool numbers updated later September would be great. We appreciate that. Okay, so I don't know if you have copies for the board.
Thank you.
So here, here's what I'm suggesting. Lisa has gone through and and provided to you, this is not for entire presentation this evening. What I asked her to do, because we had said that we would, at a minimum tonight, we would talk about our game plan in terms of spending. additional time with this. What I wanted her to do is just go over. Some of the work that she has done since we last spoke. At the retreat and then subsequent to that, in terms of how we're formulating. District goals for you to consider, because I know the board, I hope I'm not misspeaking. Is anxious in very, in very short order of adopting at minimum the board overarching goals for the year. We can, let's open it up to discussion after. This is how that opportunity to pick a few of these slides. This could take, you know, this is probably at least an hour presentation, but what I thought I wanted, what I wanted to make sure we did is to let you know that we've done. We, you know, she in particular splits a considerable amount of time, thought into the next steps. And has provided some examples of frameworks that she's suggesting and the metrics. So I want her to go through what, at least a higher level view to to reassure you.
This is a preview, right? Because we're. Think we're going to schedule a.
Yes, and so what I suggested, you have a chance to kind of go through this. And then you can decide, you know, do you want to step aside? At least an hour or more on the fourteenth, do you think this should be a work session sometime between the two meetings? You might even talk about, there's some stuff in here that if we're kind of close to our target. You might say this is good, it was a few tweaks, I think we could actually bring something for the board to approve. In, you know, in early or later September. So I think there's a lot of options, but I'm going to give me a second to get her presentation up and then I'll let her, I'll turn it over to her. And you just let me know where you want to navigate to.
Alright, so you don't want me to present from here?
Oh, yeah, that would be even better.
Yeah, if you get stuck sharing.
Yeah, I have to stop sharing, yes. That would be even better.
Is this going to be available?
Yes, all presentations, that's interesting you say that, because we had said that we had it available. For the meeting, and this just got finished, so we got to get better at that. This will be available tomorrow.
Just for anyone who was looking for it.
Our eventual goal is, it's not there after the meeting, but there prior to the meeting, but we. Honestly, we're firing on all cylinders the last few weeks and some of this is being produced closer to when it's just in time.
Sorry, my tabs, my tabs are blocked. I was trying to pull up. Our district goals in terms of the the format that you're used to or write that. So there's. I, what I wanted to try to do is explain my thought process. In trying to organize a lot of, our board retreats. A lot of conversations and feedback that I've had with teacher leader groups and. Really, how can we get this into something that we can try to take and move forward? As always, I'll say there's no pride of authorship on this. This is not meant to be a final project. This is meant to be a place. To get us a step farther, to have further discussions on. So when I look at your, how goals were written historically. We had a goal, the priority and the strategy and action steps. So what I tried to do. Apologize, I keep getting that top banner. Is to follow, and I I put the presentation in a different format because this is a lot. And I don't expect you to read it from there. You don't, you don't need to be able to read the the writing for what I'm, what I'm going to propose here. So I tried to format it where we have the district goal at the top and first and foremost, my. My recommendation is that the four goals that have put forth are are great goals. And to have some consistency and carry them over from year to year. It's just really taking a look at the priorities underneath them. There's, there's two, I see two things that are happening. One. There were some action steps from the previous years that because of COVID were not acted on. And I don't, I don't want to leave those behind. What I, what I'm proposing is that we look at some goals and priorities. And then look at what was mapped out from last year and move over the salient pieces. So. Okay, so with that, I've got our wellness goal, the district will create a culture. Programs that promote intellectual, physical and psychological well-being. So a large priority that we've been working on is this welcoming and affirming environment. So I suggested a couple of things. One, that we have a priority. Two, that we define what that priority actually is. So, and I realize that you can't read this, but that I just want you to see sort of how I'm chomping things together. And then to put some strands underneath it, and the strands give you a little bit more of a comprehensive view of what types of things might you see. Under this priority. So in this welcoming and affirming environment. Some of the things we're talking about are collective responsibility to learn about student cultures and communities, close relationships with students and families. Social emotional learning programs and you get the idea. I put the compass connections, so our compass teams are again our research, our partnership with the University of Albany. And so those threads that we're putting together here, I'm showing how they're under this goal umbrella. I have a section for references. This is a section for us to put all the different. Frameworks from New York State, different research-based items, anything that were, that's resources. Research that goes into this initiative. So. I I think it's important for everybody to know that we're not pulling things out of a hat. And saying, this is what we think is going to work with our kids. So I have a section that explicitly has references. This is not an exhaustive list, but it's, it's. An example of what we're pulling from. Now, based on a conversation that we had. In agenda setting, we were really, and that I I did my best to interpret our conversation. But really looking at what are the leading indicators uh that we can measure to determine A, where we're at, and B. Um, if we've, how do we know if we've achieved any growth? So I started by um listing out leading indicators um that would be. Uh, that we would measure. Now, the idea from this, and we'll just go a couple of steps further here. Is if you notice on the, the bottom, I have an interest in. Then when we're talking about our strategy and action steps, I want to see the explicit links to the research-based practice so that we're not guessing and saying. I think that if we put kids in small groups, that that's going to yield a greater level of achievement. So um, I gave some examples here from um Hattie, uh, it's a well-known meta-analysis of over eight hundred studies where. They talk about what, what has effect in schools and what doesn't necessarily show. It's, it's like what, what juice is worth, the juice is worth the squeeze, right? If you're gonna really put something into an effort and initiative, where do we really see gains with students? So I put some, just as examples, um, that there's teacher-student relationships, professional developments, right? And you would continue to fill this out. I see this bottom part is really um the district level and schools' responsibilities to start drafting SMART goals. That show measurement of leading indicators and link to research, so. Um. You hang with me pretty good, but uh, so I, I also put in, by the way, uh, these are linked. Um, in the board drive as well, and we'll make them available publicly, um, so that the public can see it as well. This is some of our compass work. Where you can see the goal is to create a humanizing school community, and these are some of the strategies and action steps. I've got this for our MED and then also. For the middle school, so you can see some of the work that's starting to emerge from this, but we don't want to get too far. Into this, we, we gotta, we really need to solidify what these, these top-level goals are. So the, the difference, um. I, so let me just quickly go through what some of the goals are, some of the priorities that I'm suggesting. Under wellness, um, all of the schools want to have a first semester or trimester in the MED. Focus on that welcoming and affirming environment, because that is setting up the stage. For our second goal, um, and that's high expectations, I'm sorry, the um priority, high expectations and rigorous instruction. Um, and so keeping that board goal of the data-driven rigorous programming, right? Oh, keeping that goal, but really having that priority under high expectations and rigorous instructions, so again, you're gonna see. The priority, a definition, you'll see strands underneath it. Um, and the reason why I have this area shaded in pink is because it's going to be my humble suggestion. That the areas that the board is looking at are, is the areas in pink. That they're really talking about the goals, the priority. That we have, we're having common language through a definition and that there's an understanding of what is encompassed in, in this space. Um, so again, in this document, I've started to flush this out. So, second priority, I'm sorry, uh, second, the first priority in academics, the high expectations and rigorous instruction. Uh, the second one is inclusive curriculum and assessment. Um, the one that is different that I'm proposing and just uh when I'm looking at the district. Is uh capacity building and um. And again, this is something that I, I drafted, so it's open for collaboration and discussion. But the district will build slash grow the collective capacity for operational systems and continuous improvement. I really wanted to see something that encapsulated how do we work um at improving and getting better as a system. So the two priorities under this are customizing innovative programs and practices and ongoing professional learning and support. And you can see again the same format, I tried to put some definitions of both. Um, the compass connections, references, leading indicators, um, and then that's adjusted model below. So this is uh, this is the spreadsheet that I'm working on so that it has a similar look and feel to what you're used to. Um, I also tried to put it into a presentation so that it was a little bit. A little bit more welcoming, um, in terms of looking at what a priority is and um having a closer, a closer view of it. Um, what I will.
You know, looking at both of these formats.
Yeah.
I think that um, there's maybe something in between these formats that would actually be publishable for parents, which would be just like a normal A4. Like header, subheader sections um would be, I think, this is a lot of information to present.
Yes.
Right? And I think that. We've looked at that spreadsheet and we've like really digested this a lot, and I think most of us probably understand what it, what's on there. But I'm not sure we could feed that to a parent and have them.
Agree.
Um, so that, that would be great, um.
And I do, I do, would like to see them refine more and when we come up with our, again, I really want to take a critical. Look at our strategies and action steps and make, making sure that we're not only linking them back to research, but that it's a research-based practice that. That yields dividends for us.
You're, you're.
Yeah.
Lisa, you're just showing us your work process.
Yes.
Notes.
Yeah.
So you confused me in that because. I mean, this is.
But even if we're gonna sit down as a group. And like scratch notes. That would be a difficult, uh, both of these would be difficult formats to do that with. Like, we wouldn't be able to mark up comments so easily.
Right.
Um.
So my, my goal was to go from the step of our last meeting. To take all the information and to try to take a step forward, so in no ways. Do I view this as a final document or, or it's really just. Trying to bring our, bring our conversations together and in something that's in one spot.
I, I have more thoughts that might be useful for you to hold on to between now and whenever we talk about this next. Does, does anyone else, I, I feel really good about the direction this is doing, does anyone else want to speak on this?
I, I just want to agree with what you said, I, I, I think it's a good direction. Um, I just think, like you're saying, we have to actually get into the depth of what, how do we define what those goals are in school.
And this the last thing that you said, sorry.
Sorry, just, just to actually take the time to actually, you know, make those decisions.
So if, if you go back to the spreadsheet, the new one. Um, and I, I agree with everything that, that has been said in terms of what eventually gets published on um. For the general consumer, you know, parents um should be very straightforward and succinct. If you, um, Lisa, if you go back to the, the spreadsheet version.
Um, the old one or the new one?
The new one.
The new one, yeah.
You'll also see just a couple of comments I wanted to make, we did not, since we, uh, I mean, this is, you know, a generalization, I think we. Had felt comfortable with the safety and financial law, we have to build.
Do you need another?
Let me just say. Should we, okay, they're just kind of timed out. You certainly have to, um. We certainly have to make sure we go and build out the uh, the SP, the F P, but we don't, you know, that's not necessarily, um, that's more just an exercise. Bring over some of the things that we've been working on and, and those that we need to make sure are um. Present, but if you go to one of the other goals, like, let's see, AP one.
Oh, sorry.
Um, I, I don't know if you feel the same way, but I, I think if we created a document. Um, and you certainly could look at this electronically that evening as well, but if we created a document. That had a one, two, three, four, five, six. Pink areas on it, um, that's where I think we could have a really healthy, and, and I mean, Chris, what you're saying is we, we agree upon having a discussion around those pink areas. And come to some consensus, but I could see the board doing the same, that's kind of what you adopt for this year, here's our goal or priority. And the strands, and then, you know, we always have this master document electronically available in full transparency if anybody wants to see it. But really, that's the work product, right? That's how, what we're gonna use to kind of build out the um. The action plan and, and, and kind of monitor progress to report back to the board periodically. This actually could be used um in some ways as that tool where we said that periodically we'd go back. And give the board an update, we could just scroll down and take a look at some of those action items, timelines and benchmarks. To see if there's, you know, some progress in those areas um as, as we move forward. And um so like looking at this next area here. Once we build out the strategy, action, the practice, the responsibilities, timeline, leading indicators, that's not anything you have to worry about. What you would be looking at in an update was, is there any evidence of completion or effectiveness? I think by looking in those areas over time, you should see some slow and steady progress towards all of those.
Right.
Um, actions.
The, the reason why I'm thinking that a document might be more useful um rather than a sheet. Is mostly, you know, if we're over like three weeks, maybe gonna collect some thoughts on this, this um work in progress. I think we have the opportunity to mark up the document, like every line with comments and even suggested changes altogether. Um, I think that that would be really messy to try to even read on a sheet, um.
Could we create a document, one page per, uh, do you mind scrolling back up? Do, you know, if I'm understanding correctly.
It doesn't, it doesn't need to fit on one page, it could be, it could be lengthy, i- if anything, maybe a lot of white space would be good, but each, like a strands could be a, a, a whole page. You know, and references could be a whole page, um, I. I think that probably, there's some opinions here on what's important to everyone, and then of course, on your end, there's the. What's possible and what's easy and what's like gonna take a long time, and we have to incorporate that knowledge too.
Could I, I, could you tell her whether, are, are we going to tell her what we think is important before she goes through this work?
Well, I, 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 we're not gonna do it in this meeting, right?
No.
And, and I'm thinking that um, we're gonna want to talk about it a lot, but. Um. Uh, like for me to even tell her, when I'm thinking of this work in progress, I couldn't submit that feedback on the sheet. It would need to be on a document. Um, and I don't know about anyone else, but I do a lot of document collaboration, and when you have a sheet like this, it's really difficult to have multiple authors. Um. Cross-contributing.
Matt, are you, are you suggesting like a, a, a markup document where like comments are on the right?
Like a.
Like a standard word doc.
That's what you're talking.
Google Docs, yes, with suggested changes and comments, and it's, it's just not possible with Google Sheets to do that in the same way.
Is that assuming if we don't meet, that would be a process?
Well, I think if we, whether we meet or not. Um, I, it makes sense for everyone to really review the agenda before we meet, and if they have comments, collect them, but um. If, we're not gonna get all the review done in that meeting if we don't all prep for it.
No, I think that's the, yeah. Oh, good.
Sorry, can we kind of make that meeting here and kind of sort of plan for that?
I, I don't want to talk scheduling yet, can we save that for new business? Because I have another note there, but.
Um, so what I, what I think we've captured is, first of all, you need time to digest this. Uh, I think you should make your own, um, between now and whenever that meeting should occur, you can make your own personal notes in terms of. Your reflection on this, but I think a meeting together is essential because the board needs to function in consensus as to what these priorities are. And then that impersonating um would be one where I believe we need to try to find some common ground as to where you want to end up. And then that would be what the board would then, e- e- even that night or in a subsequent meeting. Adopt as the margin orders for, for this year. Um, we can work with um some of you in terms of how we give you this information in a, a format that you can. Uh, respond to, but I, I don't want to get into a situation where we're collating seven different opinions and priorities.
And that's exactly why I wanted to be able to um. Use the collab tools.
Yeah, that's, and you need some help in figuring out how you want to do that, but I'm sure we can do that.
I, I, I think it would take like about like eight or 10 minutes to just copy and paste this all into a. Like a Google Doc and then it'd be easy. Um. Uh, but, but I think it's a great start.
I, I, I really do.
I don't know that we need to dig deeper on the content right now, but is there something else you wanted to share?
No, I, I, I wanted, I felt like it was important for you to understand my thought process, because if I, if I had only presented you with. The goal, priority and strands, I don't know that you would have understood how I got there and that. Uh, in that we're linking to research, practice and frameworks is extremely important because it. I just want to be very, very mindful that if um we all have an idea about what can make education better. And we have, we, we really have, have limited time to be able to focus on things that we know work. So that's where I want, that's where I want to start, um, and just be careful that we, we don't have, um. Trying to be careful with what I say, with that, that it, that uh initiatives or agendas don't wind up coming into the strands because. There's a perception that that, um. I, I, I want everything to flow and work together, is, so it's not that, that I don't, I'm not open for other things to go into it. It's just I want to be really mindful and targeted about what we do.
And could you go over to the capital, uh, what are your thoughts? This is something new that was not previously um part of the um.
I've, I reviewed that on this and we. Um, I think we need to spend some time developing a definition or even understanding the proposed definition. Because that's a new way of looking at um, uh, school. Resources, I think, I don't think we've looked at it, re- school resources with that lens in this district before.
We have.
So.
And the, the language is also suggested, so I put strands in there because I was trying to think of a way to identify it, I'm not married to. You know, any, any of the descriptors, it's just trying to put it in a way that, that makes sense.
Um, I, I'm gonna circle back on the calendar in this, um, down when we talk items for future, but um. I think we can move on here and um. Anything else in your reports?
I did some, I exhausted.
Nice. Um, so we, you know, we haven't had a, a committee report yet, this uh, this organizational session. Um, still working on a draft of a committee update, but. Um, Craig, I'd like you to update us um on, on facilities, but um with a couple of prompts. Um, one is um, we have a lot of board interest in facilities.
Mm-hmm.
Um, more than we can absorb under open meeting laws unless we expand. Um, you know, who's, who's available to the facilities meeting, and I, I, I'm not sure we're gonna have any answers tonight. Um, but I'd like the facilities committee to sort of think on that maybe of. Is it, does it, does it make, i- is it, is it simple to extend that? Uh, or is it not simple? Because we can't include more than two board members, and facilities affects everything, right? And so everyone in the board is interested in where, where, where we're moving in process, and I. I wouldn't want to limit that, but right now we have to get another community member or permanent district employee in there to.
We can, we can uh take a look at that and um check the charter. I wrote it, can't remember, I wrote it a long time ago. Um.
We've got a lot of attention on that this year, and I don't know.
Yeah, no, certainly uh. Look into it and, and uh.
I, I think if we could go to three members, there'd be, there'd be interest there. Um, in three members.
It seems like out of it's.
I think three members keeps us under more.
It, it, only if it's not a majority of the committee, so we would need a total of.
We would need.
Six people.
Seven.
In the meeting to do that.
Seven people.
No, it, it can be even.
Okay, so it's.
So that, that's a tough number, right? Because it's, it's, it was only five right now. Um, where it's only, it's, we have two non-board members and two board members, right? So we added a very board member.
Well, perhaps that's possible.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a look at the charter and do a little homework on it and come back.
Um. Okay, anyway, you guys met earlier this month?
We did, we met August tenth, uh.
I didn't bring the.
No, we, we met August tenth. Um, part of our discussion, some of the stuff we looked into was along the lines of what Mia was talking about, uh, we knew the uh. Um. Picnic tables were a huge hit and we discussed getting some back, knowing that the fair is back in session. Um, we would not probably be able to use those anymore, or again, for a while. Uh, last year, the convenience of using them, they were just sitting there because nothing was happening over on the fairgrounds because of COVID. So that was a big hit, we want to uh follow up on, on the uh picnic tables. Um, we also talked about expanding the outdoors. Um, we also talked about expanding the outdoors uh over at the middle school, so we. I'm bringing to the board's attention when we learn more about it. It's just a uh start of an idea of a outside open air pavilion. And who knows, maybe it can uh go around um. You know, if if we do this, uh it would start at the middle school.
And the kids sort of congregate half in the lawn and half in the uh uh the gym field, right?
Yeah.
So is that like what you're thinking?
That's what we're thinking, exactly. But we'll have more to present. Uh, we just gotta get some numbers and some. We gotta make sure. That we can even do this where we want to uh run it in some of our projects under. Just the best deal in front of the school was a major.
I think.
War war deal.
There could be a secret bunker under that.
You got.
I think Andy is looking into this.
So so we will be following up on that. That was part of our discussion. We got an update on the uh uh BCS. Uh, that's going on track. Um, that's our five-year buildings uh survey. Um, we discussed a little project. Around Smith Pond. Uh, there's a trail system there that needs some cleaning up. We're possibly looking into um. Making a deal or making some kind of uh giving permission to Columbia County Land Conservancy. To take out a project like that, possibly looking into other groups that, you know, or something like that, depending on where it goes. So um. It was a, it was a good uh, good meeting, uh well attended. Chris was there, Muriel, Sal, Mike. Andy and um. Like I said, we didn't get anything back yet, but I guess the. The good news was uh BCS was on date or up on, you know, on schedule. Um, but the south side um. Spaces was a big conversation and that's what we are hoping that we learned out of COVID and those picnic tables. So at least we are hoping to get some picnic tables backed out and further in this uh pavilion idea for all weather. So. Um, so hopefully you guys, the board's excited and let's go forward with that. Kind of an idea, but we don't have anything to really put in front of you, pictures or or prices. And and feasibility on what's underground, so. Uh, we'll, we'll, we will get back to you quickly if you want us to. Would you like us to soldier forward with those kind of ideas?
Yeah, it sounds great. And if if the CLC is not interested, um shadow.
There's, there's other.
Couple of.
There's other organizations out there.
Yeah, it would be a collaboration between CARB and.
CARB.
Yeah. Through the conservancy and perhaps volunteer organizations. Chris is willing to build another bridge and. We did, based on the feedback that we got, and he's um working with our architects, Chris brought up some good points in terms of um making sure that we um look at different locations. Um, properly place this. And uh, there's also just one other um. We're, we're looking to see that part of it could be um underwritten by um either donations or um contributions as well. Um, there's some ideas floating around about you know. Buying bricks and 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 um.
Yeah.
We've come coming up with a partial um thought on that to helping us with that.
Depending on the uh pricing of the project, we. In anticipation, that was higher than what we want to spend. And a little give back to the community, part of our idea was is to walk ways to it and around it. People could uh have their name or uh, you know, the sponsor brick or a section of it. That also kind of goes along with our trees and stuff that leaves a.
Leaves a mark.
Leaves a mark, lasting legacy. Maybe uh senior class might, you know, wanna do something, you know, there's lots of ideas there, so. Um, and that would help, also help fund. So.
Yeah.
And it would be part of theirs, their project too.
Kind of the purpose of asking the facility to give me the way in is I didn't want maybe. We don't wanna get too far ahead of ourselves without seeing if the board was interested in making sure that we. On that can.
I I'm very interested in that. I I'm I'm equally if not more interested in ways we can use the pond. Um, the trails could certainly use improvement. Um, also, it's a thousand feet long. Um, and. You could uh, you could get quite a sweat up in a kayak or canoe. Um, and I I know that the town had that idea when they put the dock in. But some schools have programming around that and I don't, I don't know what the constraints are, if that's facilities or something else, but I'm interested in what's possible.
The um, not to get too far off the path, but the um Columbia Grand Conservancy has a conservative.
Conservancy.
Conservancy has a educator. And so um, well, I know um they've begun to do some work, but we'd like to um tie that person into our science teachers here. Um, there's nothing, we've talked about project-based learning and exper- experiential learning. On this wonderful resource in our backyard where we potentially, I don't know if we choose to any, now we could do some water sampling, some erosion studies. We can really try to make some of our curriculum more relevant and they're willing to help us with a little bit of that with their expertise, so. We wanna explore that as a partnership.
So it sounds like uh. The board is forward, we'll move forward on some of these ideas and projects. Uh, get some numbers and some pictures and some drawings and have a little bit more input for you.
Okay.
Right.
Um. Got uh. Rock to our resolutions. Uh, new business instruction. Um. R eleven. Be it resolved that the Board of Education adopt the following curriculum, ELA Grade Twelve Curriculum Map and ELA Grade Nine Concepts Curriculum Map. Can I have a motion?
Question.
What, questions or comments on that one?
Just um. Lisa's gonna ask this, but um I I didn't, I didn't want um anyone to to um think that we have forgotten that, you know, one of our initiatives that we're still hopeful to get. At least started before school starts is making sure that we have a well-established tab on our website that at a minimum. For the start of school starts to show um where we can map back to um existing New York State curriculum and as we move forward, Lisa has some wonderful ideas. How we can expand on that in the future. So I don't want you to think that we've forgotten about that, just a lot of balls in the air right now and it it hasn't fallen through the cracks, so.
Okay, thank you.
Still working on it.
You you jumped ahead. That was exactly gonna be just.
No, I don't know what you're thinking.
Uh, and uh, there wasn't exactly a question, but um. We have questions on that? I mean, this was only these two curriculum changes, right? Because they didn't make the the last meeting.
Um. Because we spent a lot of the uh, a lot of the time in after the summer was on the compass teams.
Yeah.
There wasn't a lot of new curriculum that was written. For the summer.
Uh, in any case, all in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? And we can move on. Um, this one's a bit of a mouthful, mouthful. Uh, bear with me. Uh, resolution eleven or twelve. Uh, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby reorganizes the middle and high school administrative staff to include two co-principal positions. Um, and this is a compound resolution. Also, be it resolved that uh Mr. Thorson and Mr. Burns shall maintain their tenure and seniority. In a school administrator and supervisor tenure area. And that their duties uh uh are assigned to each co-principal um. As determined by the superintendent. Can I have a motion?
I will motion. Second.
Questions or comments? I know we talked about this meeting and. Came up during the town hall yesterday. Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. R thirteen, be it resolved that the Board of Education approve the MOA with the Principals Association. Uh, can I motion?
I will make a motion.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the consensus agenda, R fourteen, be it resolved that the Board of Education accept the consensus agenda J through L as written? Can I have a motion?
Question.
Second.
Questions or comments on this?
The only comment I just wanna make is to let you know, I kind of update you, I believe. And I hope I'm accurate that we's um, we are in good shape, staffing lines, instructional staffing lines. Um, with the exception, I believe, of one AIS teacher that we still need to hire. Uh, and a and a couple grant-funded um positions that were not as big a priority. And we still are looking for a couple of TAs and and classroom aides, but. Um, I've been talking to some of my colleagues around the region and I know talking Kristen. I say in in principal meetings, uh we we seem to be in better shape than some. Uh, so I'm very grateful, uh again, uh welcoming the new teachers today. They seem to be in good shape at the service.
Okay, um. Can I have, do we get motion, do we do motion on this?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, no other comments? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consensus agenda passes. And we are. Down to items for future agenda. Um, and before I solicit any other items, um I I wanted to just mention a couple of things. One is, um, when we were doing committee review. Um, Pat um kindly read the uh vision, mission, wellness charter um and found that uh we were in fact um. Basically over the charter's remit, so that that charter is no longer in effect. Um, so vision, mission and wellness does not, no longer exist at a corporate level. There is a little bit of um. Uh, alignment between some of that mission when that came, when that was first put in place uh three years ago, two years ago. Three years ago. And we're sort of circling back on some of that. Um, and we're talking um a lot more this year about goals, uh priorities for the district. Um. There was a proposal from from the district for to meet. Um, so this is sort of, before we, I I don't wanna move to add a specific uh. Item here, but we have the opportunity to charter a working group around um. Maybe having a continued uh look into how we're doing on priorities. We we could, um, you know, we're gonna meet in a couple of weeks, hopefully, to discuss this dispatch of priorities, but then the other question is. Do we wanna keep this discussion in the uh, in the open meeting and meet regularly about it and and block out time on the regular agenda? Do we want to have special meetings? Um, I don't, I'm not highly opinionated here, but uh it's worth just noting that we've got some options and it um continue to think on this. Uh, and then, and then maybe we can make a specific proposal. Um, this, is that anyone having a feedback today other than we we do in a moment, how to discuss the scheduling of a follow-up meeting?
Probably uh as we're goal writing, priority writing, which we should see what comes out of that. It may be directing us. In a direction. Where we have a discussion early, monthly, yearly and covers. What that wellness committee and all that was designed for anyways, or we could actually plan it.
Yeah.
That's designed in with our goals and. Strategies on how we're going forward, so it's an option.
Matt, we are still talking about, or are we perhaps talking about a separate meeting to hit this?
We're definitely, I I would like to have that meeting.
Yes.
But it's worth noting that the um, the the mission um charter has evaporated.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that.
And so do we reform? Um, are we happy with? You know, how this is proceeding in a public meeting. It takes up a lot of time to have these discussions as a whole group.
This.
This and it could.
But the mission won't.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, it 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 takes a lot of time. Um. Do we wanna be in an open meeting where everyone's involved? Do we wanna split off and have the people that are most focused on on doing some some work on it? You know, work on it and bring it back to the board. I I think we have to think on that too.
One of the ideas that just came to me as you were speaking about it, open meeting, one of the problems with that was getting um. Community members, others, we have community members at every meeting. Uh, so as we brought up different topics, they could possibly chime in.
It's a great opportunity to get feedback that um they weren't planning on offering, right?
Yep.
It's here in the room.
So that adds another bonus in my mind to working on it as a group. I'm supportive of a committee only because I think it, you know, fosters real focus on the the topic and. Brings it to the board, you know, with recommendations, but you know, I I'm open to anything as long as we make sure that we continue to.
Yeah, we 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 had four or five volunteers for that committee that doesn't exist, so. Um. I uh, we'll keep that discussion moving. I I didn't have a specific ask there other than the fourteenth was the proposal, right? Or.
The fourteenth is our next public meeting, so the question was, do you? Um, and again, it's hard to tell what's on that agenda for that evening. Um. But you could extend that meeting or create an agenda item to talk about this. My sense is we seem to get, when we get in these conversations, they're rich. And they're meaningful and they're important. Um, and I don't really, you know, again, I hate to commit uh another evening, but. Uh, it would seem like um at least there's. An argument made that this next meeting is, could be pretty involved. Um, to get you to the point where you're comfortable to approve some things. You're you're, I serve at your pleasure. But I'm not so sure of time blocking an hour to next meeting is gonna get you where you wanna be, but that's just the.
What, do we know what the uh business agenda looks like for next meeting?
Um. Just the audit, it's 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 still pretty light. Um.
I think, other than the fact that we were all sat, everyone liked the format last time, right?
Retreat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we need another separate meeting.
Yeah, I would agree with Chris. I think we might need to, if we're gonna. Go into this and go into that with a focus of trying to flesh out, we're gonna need that separate time. Um, because I don't wanna have to, I wanna focus on that if I'm, if we're gonna focus on that um in a meeting.
And we had the administrators here last time, so um.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm. I don't know, Lisa, if you have an opinion, you know, since we would be kind of focusing on the overarching goals of which they're in decent shape. Um, the priorities and the strands, which are really kind of at the purview of the board. Um, certainly we can invite the administrators for feedback, but I'm almost thinking that this next meeting um might be a very just healthy discussion amongst just the board. And and and, you know, Lisa will certainly be there, be there. But uh, I I don't know how, if you, you know, how you were part of the retreat. Um, if you feel strongly about participation, I I know you're representing two, two-thirds or you're. Two-sixths of you.
I I don't like volunteering our hard-working administrators.
Yeah, that's what I, I quite honestly.
But I would love to have their.
I I don't, I don't want them to be offended by them not being invited, but I think we probably be, um, they probably be okay with that. And I think like this, this next meeting really is, is for you to be comfortable with what. You're setting kind of the tone for the year for us. But I mean, this is my opinion.
On uh. On not invite ears, we've come up with a rough draft out of our meeting and asked our opinion. And have made some practices, so that's an option too. It works really good. It shows uh, you know, collaboration, so.
Matt, um, after after helping us figure out, it seems like Lisa might have an idea, taking that information and putting it in a document that can be collaborative. Maybe that's an opportunity for me to send it to, or at least the science administrative team and have their eyes on it.
Yeah, that'd be great.
For feedback for you guys in anticipation of that meeting.
Um. I'm not highly opinionated, but if um, it would be easy to put this into our meeting and I could work to keep the rest of the agenda light. And we have to tell Sal, he doesn't get to tell us about the wonderful stuff that's happened in the first few weeks of school. Um, we have to push that into email or something if we're gonna do that. But if we were gonna do that format, I would propose that we time box it. Like an exact number of minutes, like sixty or ninety, and we won't finish and we'll cut it off. And we would resume it another night. I don't want that to, even ninety minutes seems too long to me. But I I agree, we're not gonna get it done in sixty minutes, so the alternative would be to call a special meeting. Lisa, do you have an opinion?
I I think if to have some focused time on this where that's all we're focusing on, we we could probably be more proactive.
Is everyone in favor of that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so. Um. We could schedule right now or um I could ask Deborah to. Coordinate and figure everyone's availability and pose like. Coordinate and figure everyone's availability and pose like. Two or three dates and we could just vote on it and. Hopefully, we'll all be able to be here. I mean, if not. Um. Do you know, I I know it's hard to get these.
Check server.
We'll do like.
Yeah.
Do the floor.
Do it.
That sounds great.
Yeah.
And and with the idea being it's probably after the next meeting to give us time to review. Um and think and do feedback and get some administrator feedback.
Yeah, I think asking anyone on the team to do anything between now and the start of school is going to be difficult, so.
They'll be aiming at the tail end of September, probably.
Always that, maybe let's say it later, right? So if the fourteenth is the next meeting, the following week would be like the twenty-first, sometime that week would be ideal, twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty. Third. Um would be ideal. That way, it it may not be in ratification form, but it could be for, let's see, seven, I'm sorry, fourteenth, that's about um. When am I twenty-eighth? Is it twenty-eighth? I'm expecting after that. So it would be ideal to set a target that you would adopt. The board goals, priorities, and whatever we want to call it strands on September twenty-eighth.
That's my birthday.
Is it? And we have a couple of things to celebrate.
Um, okay.
And and again, that's just um.
Okay, that that sounds good to me. So uh does anyone else have any items for future agenda? Okay, um.
The meeting on the. Regular meeting. And then the following Tuesday.
April one.
We're not sure yet.
Okay, I haven't said, right. I I I'm also having a deal that's sitting on the edge here.
We're not sure yet.
We'll send something out for twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. And what time just uh, you know, do you want to start? What's the earliest? Five thirty, six o'clock? What time do you want to start?
How much time do you want, Lisa? I don't like meetings more than two hours because I think everyone's rained out after the second hour.
Yeah, I think we experienced that at the retreat. I say, you know, um if we say two and go two and a half, it wouldn't be too bad. I want to say, again, it it's about, I know, you know, some of you, what time, what's the earliest you'd like to be? Is five thirty early?
Why don't we make that one of the doodle questions? And I would, I would bias towards earlier, but but I don't, I'm not highly opinionated. I agree.
Yeah, so five, six, seven, seven, eight, like five thirty to seven thirty possibly eat, but. Uh jump, not jump in, that's terrible. Um cut, drop, cut off, eight o'clock.
Lights out at eight.
Yeah, I think um having Andy, having Andy program the eating system and the lights.
We already go through that last time.
That's it, that's getting hot, hot in here, Joe. Um yeah, I I think um we were all pretty. We're excited but toasted by the end of the retreat, so.
Not from alcohol.
I guess the word toasted has to be, we were hot, it was very hot.
All right, so um I think that's items for future. Um we have a second public comment. We've got more public with us, that's great. Um. Have any of you come up with questions that we didn't answer? Because I I I I love to hear questions, but I also like uh just any insider feedback. And you can just raise your hand if you'd like to be promoted. Looks like. No hands. Um.
Anybody?
Have a chance to do, like.
Yeah, I'm I'm going to.
Oh yes, please. Uh do you have a mic?
Yes, we do. Line up. State your name, board members.
Uh my name is Ashley Boda. Um I have my son Nicholas, who is nine. Uh I've been having a little bit of trouble and concerns regarding his bus route. He is autistic, ADHD, low comprehension. IEP, he's actually mindset the seven. Now, um as we know, sometimes things come last minute. And I finally got a babysitter. I'm a single mom. Uh she's in a different bus route. And I got denied due to full capacity. His bus stop uh is on Maple Ave, I believe it's called. And he's on Water Street. Um I have to work full-time, so I can't give him to the bus stop. He would have to cross the street, go through the playground and get on the other side of that taskbar by himself. Um I have called the school and I said, and I've. I fought tooth and nail. I said, no way is he safe going across that street by himself, especially the condition he's in. And I. I got told I have to wait two weeks after the school starts. To decide if that decision can be made or not for that bus to be available. So I'm asking if there's any. Special accommodations? That I can get my son on that bus due to the condition he's in.
Uh uh we don't, we don't um usually um respond directly. This is um usually a listening session for everyone to sort of hear the public feedback. Um oftentimes, we have to research, think, discuss. Um. But um if if anyone has any immediate thoughts, um. We could uh.
I've even spoken to the Special Board of Education. Everything. Um and of course, school's starting right around the corner, so I I'm trying to. Get some feedback of something, anything.
Um, okay, so I think um. Think it's good that uh. It's good we all got to hear this story. Uh I don't, I don't have anything more to add right now, but but thank you for your uh.
My concern and my voice of thought that I'm not really getting response from.
What I will say is that um I'm aware of the situation and I'll consult with Mr. Chuddy. Um we'll take, take yet another look at it and um someone will be in contact with you um in the next day or two.
Okay, thank you. That's all I was asking.
Absolutely.
And and by the way, Ashley, I I really appreciate you coming. I know it's difficult to sit in front of a group like this. Um.
I just.
So I, I appreciate it.
She was the vice president and I, my heart aches for you and I understand, but.
Um. Do we have any other public comment? Okay. I think that's it for the uh agenda here uh before journeying. Do we have um any um. Meeting content that needs to be discussed behind executive session? I'm like, we see things, okay.
Motion.
Second.
That's the German motion. Wait, no, no.
I didn't want you to change your mind.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think that's passed.
Good night.
Right.